On Tuesday afternoon, January seventh, two thousand twenty five, and I called this work meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners to order. And I understand we have new employees. Jody, you want to introduce your new employee?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jody Tripp, Beltrami County Auditor, Treasurer. I am here to introduce Edie Franzen, who is our new election specialist. She came to us as an intern. She worked as a intern through BSU for this last election cycle, and now she is permanently our election specialist. So, welcome, Edie.
Hi, I'm Edie Franzen. I originally came from Rogers, Minnesota. I attended Bemidji State University the past three and a half years, majoring in political science, and I'm excited and eager to meet all of you guys, as well as the people I meet along the way and start as an election specialist here at Beltrami County.
Awesome. We love hiring beavers.
Go Beavs!
Welcome, Edie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new employees? And just like that, you're all gonna leave then, right? Ah, see how you are? All right. Any Commissioner have a future work meeting topic that they'd like to bring up? Seeing none, we'll move on to our legislative platform discussion, and we welcome our Representatives, Matt Bliss and Bedell Duran. Thank you for showing up, and we've got Steve Green on Zoom. So, hi, Steve. Thanks for showing up. Appreciate that. And then we also have Eric Simonson. Hi, Eric. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome, Representatives and Senator, to our work session today. Really pleased that you could join us this afternoon. We're excited to share with you our legislative platform that the county's been working on, and the County Board adopted just a few weeks ago. We have a number of items, about ten items on the list, and as we prepare for the legislative session, that's going to begin here on January fourteenth, we thought it prudent to get these ideas and concerns and issues before our local representatives in time for the session's start. With those ten items, what we're going to do today is spend some time going through the county's items, and I'll have staff that are specialists in each of these areas make the initial presentations. We have about forty-five minutes or so for the conversation, so it'll probably take us anywhere from thirty minutes or so to get through most of the legislative platform, and we're hopeful that we'll have ten to fifteen minutes at the end for questions or just conversation. I know that the Board would also be interested in potentially learning about your views and ideas in regard to the legislative session and how you think it might roll out this next period. So, with that, I won't delay any further, and I'll just kick this off. We'll talk a little bit about the state bonding bill. Of course, that comes, it's come many times, and there's been many requests by many organizations, including our county, but I'll have Bruce Hasbarg and our Public Works Director speak to this issue, particularly as it relates to the county's need for demolition landfill as a result of some regulatory changes that the state is imposing statewide. So, without further ado, Bruce Hasbarg, our Public Works Director, will start us off.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, Bruce Hasbarg, Public Works Director, County Engineer. The state bonding bill, the county is part of a nine-county coalition that has put in a bonding request. This would be for, to address our demolition landfill waste. The MPCA is coming out with new rules that is gonna end up closing our landfill. You need to have a lined landfill underneath the new rules, new line demolition landfill. And so, we are trying to be proactive and figure out a solution for what we're gonna do with our demolition waste when our landfill no longer can accept that waste. Again, there are nine counties in the area that have come together and put together a solution to this, and that is what we're calling a hub-and-spoke concept, where we would have lined landfills at a couple of locations, and then everybody else would be the spokes and have a transfer station that would collect and then move that demolition landfill waste to those, to those landfills. We would be one of those spokes. We would be one of those transfer stations that would process that demolition waste. But this whole concept costs money, and so our request to the state, it is roughly a sixty-seven million dollar project. Fifty million dollars is our request. For Beltrami County ourselves, it is roughly seven million dollars that we're asking for from the state, and we're gonna be just over two million dollars in the county share that we put towards that, towards those facilities. It is a big ask, big request, and we are of the opinion that if it can't be fulfilled, then these rules shouldn't be changing. It is a very hard, unfunded mandate to change the rules like this, and it's a big, heavy cost to the county to be able to address that waste. And so, again, if the state, the MPCA, can't be helping come up with solutions, then the rules shouldn't be changing. But that is our state bonding request that we've got.
Thank you, Bruce. We have several other items. Ann Ledseth couldn't make it today. I expected her to send over one of her colleagues, but that didn't happen. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go through this together here. One of the next issues we have is the Behavioral Health Continuum of Care. And of course, behavioral health is a big issue that has been problematic for the state and certainly counties that are providing the services that the state requires. And so, with limited resources in regard to funding for behavioral health services, in addition to limited capabilities regarding facilities, it's been very, very difficult for counties, particularly Beltrami County and rural Minnesota, to offer a continuum of care as it relates to behavioral health services. And while we do have some services that are available, and Sanford Health locally has been able to expand just a little bit in those service areas, there is still a drastic need. And we're watching the needs of our community, in particular in rural Minnesota, increase as it relates to mental health needs, and very little resources are available for those needs. So, we're asking, again, that the state, you know, investigate and as much as possible, attempt to provide resources, whether they be funding, or facilities, or staffing, or whatnot, to continue to expand on the behavioral health continuum of care and develop sufficient state-operated safety net for mental health and behavioral health needs and facilities that meet the members of our community's crisis situations as well. So, facilities really are the biggest limitation, and of course, that's not anything new. That's been discussed or shared with regard to previous concerns by other counties across rural Minnesota. We just wanted to make sure that we emphasize the importance and the continuing need for those services as we move forward in this legislative process. Number three on our list has to deal with the cost share for state direct care and treatment facilities. As you know, counties are billed a hundred percent for the direct care of cost when an individual no longer meets medical criteria for hospitalization, and they're housed in state-run facilities. We've had specific issues with this in the past, particularly in regard to a couple of citizens who met this criteria and were moved to a state facility, and that state facility made this declaration about medical need, and they were supposed to be transferred to another facility, which didn't happen for six months. What happened in that situation is that we ended up with a bill of almost three hundred and forty thousand dollars for that one individual for six months. We worked with the Commissioner and also their staff at Department of Health and Human Services to attempt to try to reconcile this. With some progress, Senator Green was absolutely instrumental in helping the county do a legislative fix to this, and that legislative fix piggybacked on top of a temporary moratorium for this type of issue in regard to payments by direct care for counties that had a two-year moratorium on it. That moratorium is set to expire here in another year, and so we want to make sure that that issue isn't lost on the legislature and actually gets carried forward so that we can have a continuum of care that moves forward, particularly for these people who are no longer meeting medical criteria for hospitalization, but they are housed in state-run facilities at the full cost of the county, which we have no recourse. We have no way to verify, audit, account for, even verify. We just have to take the state at its word, that these folks are where they are, and then we get the full bill. So, that's a pretty concerning issue as it relates to our costs. And when we have a swing like that, five, six hundred thousand dollars with multiple citizens throughout a year, that we can't possibly plan for, budget for, it makes it very, very difficult on our budgets. And so, we want to make sure that, that that issue is alive and continues to be worked on at the state level in order to help us resolve those issues finally, and the impacts financially for the counties moving forward. Also, number four here for the elimination of the county share of behavioral health fund, substance use disorder reforms were passed during the 2017 legislative period, but, and substance use disorder reform did seek to transform the service continuum from an acute episodic model to a chronic and longitudinal model. The direct access or Rule Twenty-Five process has been the method for eligible people to access publicly-paid for substance use disorder treatments, services in Minnesota, and this has been pretty much the case since the late nineteen eighties. Effective July of 2022, however, comprehensive assessments replaced the Rule Twenty-Five assessments, and the Rule Twenty-Five process became obsolete. Essentially, those counties who meet the credentialing requirements to provide services will do so as providers, but we have to accept financial responsibility for the individuals that are eligible for SUD treatment and main the cost share up to about twenty-three percent or so. So, we, again, this is one of those financial concerns that's related to county operations, hard to budget for. The rulemaking and the qualification of these individuals is such that, and the requirement for county cost share is such that it has, it places a burden on the county. So, essentially, the Behavioral Health Fund, as per only, counties are no longer in a decision-making role, but we currently remain financially responsible. And I think that's really the crux of the issue on this particular one, is that we have no decision-making or, again, oversight authority, yet we bear the costs associated with these behavioral health criteria and services. So, that's, that's an issue and a concern for us going forward. When we look at, moving on to number five here, the legislative changes with unfunded fiscal impacts to counties, this is particularly important from human, Health and Human Services standpoint. As we saw lots of measures get passed or in rulemaking take place in the last legislative session, there were several unfunded mandates that came out, particularly in the Health and Human Services arena. One of those was associated with the African-American Family Preservation and Child Welfare Disproportionality Act, which requires that counties go through extraordinary measures to reunite and to find, find, I should say, and reunite members of color, community members of color, with as many of the family members as we can for reaching out for services and reconnections and that kind of stuff, which is an extraordinarily wonderful concept and would be great to do. But the statute requires that these extraordinary measures are almost endless, and that places an enormous financial burden on the county to then try to go and track and find and resolve and go through the paperwork. I mean, this becomes a huge historical and genealogical challenge for the county to attempt to do. This particular legislation didn't come with a fiscal note, so there was no knowledge that the legislature had as to costs for this particular type of legislation. That's particularly concerning. We have done an analysis internally to the county, and we have estimated that that cost to just Beltrami County alone is going to be north of one point three million dollars. That's money we did not put in our budget for next year. And of course, it doesn't go into effect next year. There's two counties that are piloting this first, and then all the other counties will have to follow suit. So, we're concerned about this. We want to get this fixed. The Association of Minnesota Counties is also very concerned about this as well, and they're doing a statewide study to evaluate the fiscal impact to all the counties across the state, as much information as they can gather. But right now, when I went to the conference in December, the estimate is that the cost to counties across the state is gonna exceed possibly thirty-five to forty million dollars. That's thirty-five to forty million dollars of unfunded mandates that come right back to the counties to attempt to implement this law. So, that's, that's one area that is an example of this unfunded mandate challenge and how we get directly impacted by that. A second one is known as the age of criminality. This is a particularly concerning unfunded mandate as well. The legislature has decided that it wants to adjust the age of criminality in such way that children between the age of ten and thirteen, who did commit a crime, used to go to a detention facility or juvenile facility of some kind, and now they're raising that age of criminality to thirteen, which means essentially if a youngster between age ten and age thirteen commits a crime, they're not going to detention or the juvenile facility. Instead, they're gonna be placed in foster care. So, we already have a hard time placing youngsters, particularly teenagers, in foster care as it is. It's difficult to find foster parents that will take on troubled teens. It is more difficult to find foster parents that are gonna take on troubled teens who have committed crimes. And some of these crimes are pretty heinous. I mean, they can be rape of a sister or some other child. They can be arson. They can be, of course, theft, all sorts of, you know, things, domestic violence, even as youngsters. So, the fact that the county now has to find a place and is fully responsible for not only finding but paying for that place is an extraordinary burden and a big concern for us. We don't have facilities in Beltrami County to take this on. We have a juvenile detention facility, but now we're not allowed to send them to the juvenile detention facility. So, once again, this issue gets placed on the county to sort of figure out, and we're not really sure what to do. We just don't, we just don't have the facilities and the funding associated with that. So, that's another one. That's just an example of unfunded mandates that come to hit us. And there's, there's a number of these that roll through, and I know that this is kind of a theme that's growing across the state. As I talk to my colleagues in other counties, we hear more and more about the impact of these unfunded mandates and the fact that a lot of times, even the legislature doesn't know what the impact of these unfunded mandates is going to be. And so, we end up not finding out until the legislation is passed and it's time to implement. So, those are, those are also concerns as well. Moving on to number six, we want to talk a little bit about Health and Human Services Systems and Transformation Modernization. This is just a general knowledge or general sort of request in regards to helping the state modernize its Health and Human Services information system, or essentially technology. So, as we are a arm of the state, all counties are arms of the state essentially, we work directly hand-in-hand with the state to enter information. Maybe it's about citizens who are gonna receive benefits of some kind. It might be medical assistance. It might be income assistance. It might be services of some other kind, visitation, welfare checks, you know, all the things that Health and Human Services do. We rely heavily on the interactivity and interoperability of our system infrastructure, IT infrastructure, with that of the states. And the challenge here is that the state's infrastructure continues to lag. We still have reports that there are systems that are so archaic that we're entering sometimes information two and three times for the same case, just to try to get the systems to run that aren't talking to each other, aren't working well together. And so, that is a concern as well as it relates to our efficiency, our productivity. Of course, that goes right back to staffing. If we could be more efficient, if we can optimize services and technology, utilize state-of-the-art technologies, we would be a lot more productive and therefore potentially could impact staffing levels from that standpoint, too. So, no specific request there other than to see if we can't make some movement on trying to get those technologies improved and a better platform by which the counties and the state can talk to each other technologically. Next up, want to talk a little bit about child protection opioid response allocation. This is a, this is an issue that came to light after the legislative session and after our budgeting process. So, essentially, what's happened here is that through some formularic changes that the new departments of Human Services, and you might recall that the state divided up its Department of Human Services and essentially made, I think, three or four departments. We were told there'd be no changes. Everything would be the same and whatnot. Essentially, there was a big change that impacts us by about two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and it has to do with the opioid response allocation for child protection cases. And essentially, what this means is that due to just simply the department's funding formula change, we have lost funding in our county that we have historically relied on from opioid dollars to help with neonatal and youth-related opioid addiction and services. And so, now we don't have the funding for those services. I don't think the legislature was aware of this. I'm not even sure any counties were aware of this until it actually rolled out this fall. But, and of course, by then, our preliminary budgets were required to be developed and approved before the September thirtieth statutory deadline. So, there really was no way for us to even adjust a levy or funding upwards to accommodate this. Each county was affected or impacted a little bit differently. Our impact is around that two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar allotment. This is something that also has got AMC's attention. There've been a lot of concerns and complaints lodged or logged, I should say, with AMC from a number of other counties. And it's simply, it's simply that's all there is. It's just a reallocation of funding. So, what we lost, somebody else gained somewhere in the system. So, it's not necessarily an unfunded mandate, per se, as much as it is just a reallocation of existing funding, as far as I understand. So, one of the particular concerns for us is that our county stands out as it relates to needing these services. We have essentially almost a ten-time higher rate of neonatal abstinence syndrome than the rest of the state, ten times. I mean, that's incredible. Our neonatal statistics are sadly off the charts when compared to the state's statistics or even other counties around us for that matter. So, this funding is really needed by our county. It's, it's something that has gone to helping the situation that we have. Without it, we are left to try to do the best we can with what we have remaining, which isn't a lot. So, we're concerned about that, and we'd like to see maybe a reallocation of that funding to at least keep the county whole or some direction to the Commissioner or something. And I don't know how much the legislature can do for us on that subject, but it is just a concern, and it goes again to showing that, you know, almost at every turn, there's just a continued funding challenge that seems to get worse for us as we go and is much more difficult for us to overcome. So, that takes us through the Health and Human Services and the Behavioral Health items. I'm gonna turn it back over to Bruce Hasbarg, our Public Works Director. He'll talk about transportation and solid waste. And then, I guess while I have the podium, Commissioner Gold, did you want to speak to the one on housing, or would you like staff to do that?
Mr. Chair, Minister here, Barry, just, you know, if somebody could highlight it for a little bit, I'm just, I'm happy to see that it's on there. I'm thankful for the Board that we added it at our meeting a couple, few weeks ago. Just looking for the legislature's support on really anything that they can do to support increasing housing development, whether that's incentives for private developers via tax credits or whatever. The legislature did a historic amount of funding for housing last year and two years ago. Just would like us to keep our eye on the ball on that front. So, whatever else anyone wants to add, that'd be great.
I might, I might just add that we are grateful to the legislature for the funding that it has provided over the series of years here. I think for the county, our direct impact's about seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for a five-year period. I think we're in the second year of that. We have decided as a county to put the majority of that funding into a housing trust fund and to use that housing trust fund to leverage public-private partnerships to then try to build essentially what we're referring to as legacy housing projects that are essentially gonna build something that then multiple generations or multiple citizens and residents can enjoy for a period of time as opposed citizens and residents can, can enjoy for a period of time as opposed to putting the money to, say, rent rental assistance as an example. I mean, that's kind of a one and done use of funding, whereas if we can invest in infrastructure and that infrastructure has a longer lifespan, which has a much better impact. So those types of programs, I know that we had talked a little bit also, Commissioner Gould, about regulations and the impact regulations have certainly on development in particularly affordable housing. It has become increasingly more costly to develop affordable housing for, for private sector businesses, particularly those who are in the housing field. And so more and more, we're seeing a trend, not just, you know, needed in Minnesota, but across the United States, where these public-private partnerships are really critical in order to advance affordable housing initiatives across the country. I think I read some statistic nationally that there's been almost like an 18% increase or something like that in homelessness just over this last year. So this is a national growing trend that's, that's particularly concerning. And don't quote me on that number, but I know it was, it was particularly higher than one would expect. So thank you for that. Any other thoughts on housing before we turn it over to Mr. Hasbargen? All right, excellent. I'll turn it over to him. He'll talk more about solid waste and also transportation.
Good start, good ending. Tom, about the middle part there. Transportation, Beltrami County, seek support for continued investments in transportation. A couple of years ago, there was an increase in transportation and that was in funding and that was much appreciated. However, there are a few statewide programs that are normally funded through bonding that did not see funding this last year. And so hopefully they can be funded this year. Those bonding programs, the county does take advantage of them when we do have projects. But the different programs through bonding that we do take part in is the local bridge program, the local road improvement program, Greater Minnesota Transit, Safe Routes to School, Active Transportation, and the Local Road Wetland Replacement Program. Just this last year, Beltrami County received $600,000 for a couple of bridges through their local bridge program. The Local Road Improvement Program, this year we have a project that received $1.5 million. And so that was a, a big benefit for that project. We also have a trail going out to our high school that was funded through the Active Transportation Program. And then lastly, the Wetland Replacement Program, we have multiple projects that benefit from that, that program. The state funds that program, but they go out and they create the wetlands or create the wetland banks or purchase those credits. So when the counties come through with a road project that needs wetlands to be mitigated, those credits are already there and we can just utilize that state banking program. Otherwise, if that wasn't there, to create wetland credits, it's a multi-year well ahead of our project. And so we, each county out there would have to be creating our own wetland banks while it advances these projects that we're ready to do, to do our projects. And so having that state bank out there makes those projects for us go a lot smoother. And so funding for that is a, a big benefit to the county with all of our road projects, improvement projects that we have. On the solid waste side, we again seek support for solid waste management funds. The big one there for us is there's a solid waste management tax where a portion of that funding right now goes to the general fund. And those dollars, if they could be put towards solid waste instead of the general fund, could help the county with our recycling program through the SCORE. It's the SCORE Grant Program that helps all counties with recycling. If not that, that is a funding source that could help with our, our demolition landfill, hub and spoke, that nine-county coalition project that we have out there. And so the solid waste management tax, we feel should be put it towards solid waste management activities. Lastly, on the solid waste side is an extended producer responsibility. Putting more responsibility on the producer, the retailer, and the consumer of the different products that are being made and used out there. Because the special wastes that the county has to deal with, it's very expensive for us to collect, process, and then get rid of those wastes. We're spending, you know, $1.6 million just to process and get rid of those materials. And those materials are anything from household hazardous waste to our recycling, tires, batteries, e-waste, those special ways that just don't go in the landfill somewhere. And so those are an expense to us. And so anything that can be done there to help reduce the materials, reduce the waste, or reduce those costs to the county would be very beneficial for us. So anything on the extended producer responsibility would be a benefit for the county. And so with that, that's the last of our topics.
So at this time, I would ask if any of our, either our representatives or Senator, if you had questions for us specifically about any of these items. Senator Green, did you get a copy of our list?
I likely did, but I don't have it with me. I just kind of walked in from a, from a flight. But I, I have met with, with members of your, your county already on, on a lot of these issues. And I did, you know, drop some ideas on them and there's some things that I'd like to try that we could talk about some other time. I know that you guys are probably busy here, but there's, there's so many issues. And, and what we've got down here seems to be people who have are some really good ideas about what they want, but don't have a clue as to how to pay for them. They just think they're gonna, they're just gonna happen. And, and they also have made, I think, some decisions that, that I would really like to see rolled back. But I'm gonna need, or we're gonna need help with that from the Coalition of Counties. We just are. And, and one of those would be on the landfills. You know, some of the, some of the things that they're, they're doing to you guys are ridiculous and we shouldn't be closing down landfills until their, their life has ended with the regulations that were in place when they were built. And that's with a lot of other things as well. But, you know, like I said, I could talk for a long time about that. But I wish I was there in person and I think that it would be just very beneficial for counties to get together and, and come down, even with the school districts as well. And whoever else you can get is in the way of cities and whatever to say, no more mandates. You know, if you're not going to give us the money, we can't do the mandates because if, if the money's not there, it's not possible. And I, I know that every, every, every year you guys end up jumping through hoops, but any ideas you have would be great. I've got some bills in place, not just for, for some of the things we're talking about here, which you mentioned, housing, transportation, that, you know, some of the mitigation that's had, that has to be done and the regulations that are put in place that are so erroneous. For years, there was like 25% increase in costs due to state and federal regulations. That's got up to 30% now. So it's just getting harder and harder. But so I'll, I'll just be quiet there and you guys can, can talk it out. Maybe we can meet when you come down, too.
Thank you, Senator Green. Representative Bliss or Representative-elect Bedell?
I know Steve and I have talked a little bit on the, on the hub and spoke thing and with the landfill closing. And it does, Steve's proposals make perfect sense. Like you said, that, you know, we, we do see a lot of good ideas down there. They just, they throw them out there without the funding. And, and like we heard with, with the one with the American, the African-American Family Preservation Act, it's a good idea. But, you know, there's a lot of money there associated with it. They didn't put a lot of thought into it. Seems like an effort that when they put it through. So we, we just gotta, and, and I, I know you know what the budget situation down there is this year. It's tough. I think working with Steve's solutions on rolling back some of these things, allowing your landfill licenses to expire before requiring this is, is a good first step. So I think that's, that's what we need to focus on is relieving you with the mandates. Because right now, increasing funding is, I think that's where we should focus.
Matt? Anything, Bedell?
No, I just want to highlight some things. And I actually asked Tom a question. Are you guys looking at a deficit because of all these mandates? Or what is, what is the projected budgetary outcome in the future here with all this stuff that's going on? That's going to be a big thing for us to be able to go down the legislation with, right? We're, we're bankrupt in counties because of all these unfunded mandates.
Yeah, we haven't done, thank, thank you, Commissioner, or excuse me, Representative-elect. We haven't done a fiscal analysis of all the mandates on the county. We want to be able to do that and find out what that's going to be. The, the African-American one, that mandate doesn't go into effect this fiscal year for us. So we won't have the impact this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, unless something happens and it gets changed or delayed or, or fixed or whatever you might want to call it, funded, we will have a massive problem. We will have to raise the levy to cover that by almost five or six points, just to, just to cover that one mandate. So that's huge. And of course, that's an indefinite increase that goes, you know, you know, until the mandate is, you know, we're relieved of the mandate or there's some change or something like that. You know, the, the $250,000 here and there doesn't sound like a lot. You know, there's, there's typically some operating reserve that we can tap for that. But, you know, once we do that year over year over year without these things getting fixed or without making an adjustment to revenues, then we do end up going into the, into the red. So there are big concerns related to these unfunded mandates. There seem to be a, a lot of those that came out over this last year or two. And, and, and there needs to be some adjustment made to those going forward in order for counties to continue to operate and provide the services that are mandated from the, from the state as it is, let alone attempt to, to, to offer more.
With the recent increase of the levy because of Health and Human Services, does that include the, I think this number is correct. I, I sat down with Ben and spoke to her about this stuff already. And does, does that include the $148,000 you guys losing from that opioid allocation that you are admitting?
It doesn't because we had developed the budget prior to being told that we were going to be shorted that funding based on the funding formula change. So our budget doesn't yet, does not yet account for that additional reduction based on the funding formula change that was announced in the fall of last year.
So you guys have to try to come up with the extra $148,000 that the state was hoping for.
Correct.
Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, one point I want to make sure we are clear with regard to the solid waste and the demolition landfills is just kicking the can down the road and saying, well, well, let's not implement closing. But our, our landfill is licensed until the end of 2029 right now. But we can't just build a landfill, you know, and, and pay for it all in a year. If they don't re-up our permit, we're still in the same boat that we're in. We need to have a solution and not just say, oh, well, we won't do anything. And some of the, some of the nine counties have already closed their landfill. And so of the nine counties that are in our hub and spoke program. So it's not, it's not the greatest solution to just say, well, well, let's just not implement anything. We need to get a solution started so that we can continue to have a landfill. Otherwise, it's going to end up in our woods and other areas, you know. People will get rid of it up here. It, it just won't be in a landfill if there's no landfill open. So that's, it's not gonna, the problem won't go away. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goswig. I just want to reinforce that, you know, just to expand a landfill can take half a decade in some cases. The, the permitting processes, even though you have an established landfill, can take you an enormous amount of time just to, just to keep the one that you have. So because our permit's going to expire, just as you said, that may not be good enough solution to just pause until the permit expires. Because we'd need to have some certainty before that to begin to ramp up the development process, the identification of additional lands, the acquisition of those lands, the development of the design for the, for the landfill and, and its operation and those sorts of things. So I appreciated you bringing that up because that is an important aspect.
What's the capacity of the landfill?
I don't know the exact percentage, Bedell, but it's, we're, we're on track to be able to, to operate for sure and through the end of 2029 with the current, you know, current capacity. Probably could go beyond that, but our permit is only good until the end of 2029. And so we really need that, and we've been told that, that there wouldn't be any renewal of any permits. That's the problem. And so even if we tried, you know, the MPCA, they're not going to renew our permit to expand it even, which you gotta, you gotta do something if you're, you know, either you're going to let us expand our current one and re-permit us or come up with funding for us to, you know, we, we put together the solution with eight other counties, a great solution to the problem, and all they got to do is fund it. So, thanks.
At this time, Eric, would you like to introduce yourself? I'm glad that you're on the Zoom call with us. I appreciate that. Eric Simonson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Senator Green, Representatives, good to see you. Eric Simonson with Flaherty and Hood. I represent Beltrami County and will be doing so again going into 2025. So appreciate the opportunity to kind of listen in. And I have certainly reviewed your legislative priorities and met with Administrator Barry and talked a little bit about some of the things that we can do. And we'll be sitting down with all of you as soon as session gets started here next week, presuming it actually does start. But certainly look forward to putting our heads together and coming up with some creative ideas. It's going to be challenging, but nonetheless, look forward to working with all of you again.
Thank you, Eric. The Commissioners have any other questions or thoughts or anything you want to offer? Again, I just want to make sure I thank Senator Green and Representative Bliss and Representative-elect Bedell Duran and for coming and listening to our legislative needs and we'll look forward to working with you over the next year. Anything else, Tom, that you want?
No, I, I just want to say although we have a, a long list and it's, it's going to be a challenge, it is not, we have not forgotten what the legislature, in particular our local area legislators, have done for us recently and, and over the years. There has been enormous gains that the county has benefited from with the leadership and guidance and direction of our local area legislators and, and others around the state that either used to represent us or have been partners to the county. So I just want to extend a huge thank you for that. We do appreciate all the good that's been done. And there's been an enormous amount of good by the legislature and by the state. And so we're very appreciative of that. We just sometimes panic a little bit because we are one of those rural counties that doesn't have deep pockets and we don't have a big tax base. Only a third of our entire county is, land is taxable. So we, we, we don't have places to go. We don't have many pillows to overturn or couch cushions to lift to look for additional funding when, when these things come our way. So, but nevertheless, I just want to thank you again for your, your support and advice and, and, and helping us serve the citizens that we, we serve here in the county. So thank you for that.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to MRC membership. It's that time of year where I think we've received a bill for next year's membership in MRC. This year was a trial run. We had not been a member of MRC for a number of years. And so we decided to try that for a year. And I guess we just need to have some comments from many of the Commissioners and from our Administrator to see if it, if we thought that was worth the price of admission. So I'll open that up to anybody that has. Yep, Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think a membership in Minnesota rural counties makes sense for us. We are a northern rural county with unique needs. And MRC is specifically designed to help counties that, you know, fit our characteristics. You know, it's a, a small $2,900 fee for membership. And, you know, we basically get three more lobbyists out of that. MRC is part of Capitol Hill Associates Lobbying Firm. And, you know, they have, they have a team of three lobbyists and, and an administrative assistant. And two of their lobbyists are actually really well-versed in issues regarding solid waste, specifically, I know Rob Van Osec has spent years working on securing funding, SCORE funding, and has been successful in that. And, and you know, that's one of our platform. and has been successful in that. And, and you know, that's one of our platform options or items this year. I think Commissioner Carlson and I have been successful in, in having an influence on the group. We were successful in getting language into the legislative platform this year on a number of items. So I think it's been a, a pretty good year. I, I think it's worth staying involved. Yes, they're an affiliate of AMC, and so are a lot of organizations that the county's a part of, you know, the, the County Administrators Association and Ann's Group, Maxa, you know, they're an affiliate of AMC too. So, and AMC doesn't specifically lobby for individual counties like MRC does. Their lobbyists are accessible, you know, we can call or email them anytime and, and in addition to Eric. You know, so I'd, I'd like to see us stay with them. I think it's, I think the money is there. It's, you know, it's budgeted and, and we have the funds. So I would recommend us staying with them. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments? Nope.
Yeah, Craig? Here, you've been attending some of those. I'd like to hear what you have to say about it.
Good. I always like to go last as chair, right? I would echo some of the thoughts that Joe had. I think that the biggest concern right now that probably from Beltrami County's perspective is the hub and spoke system. And, and if we can get significant support from the MRC to help us get funding and regulatory fixes for the hub and spoke system, that would be money really well spent. The only, I think probably the only concern I have is if there's issues that affect outstate Minnesota, greater Minnesota, and being an affiliate of AMC, we can't go, we can't do anything that's counter to an AMC position. And that puts MRC in sort of a little bit of a tough spot sometimes, that maybe there's some things that we would like to do differently that AMC might not be comfortable with. That would be my only negative that I would bring up. But that being said, I would agree with Commissioner Gould that for the 2,900, I think it's worth at least one more year and see how well they do for us, especially in this hub and spoke system with the MPCA. And I think that, that would be money well spent this year to, to see how that goes. With that, do we need to make a motion to approve membership in MRC or?
No, sir. We just need a direction on that. It has been budgeted for, assuming this was the direction that the board was going to take. But before we paid the bill, wanted to make sure that that is truly where you intended to go since last year when this came up. You had asked us to pursue it on a year trial basis. So just following through and making sure that you're satisfied and I can take care of the paperwork. I think based on, looks like everybody's kind of got their head non to continue membership.
Richard?
Yes, I, I'd just like to weigh in. I think it's, it makes sense that we go ahead and keep with them. They, when I was, when they first started off, it was pretty small. They didn't have a whole lot of effect. But they did a real overhaul on their leadership and they have much, I think they're much improved. And so I would be very much in favor of staying with them for at least another year.
Craig?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I am hesitant to, because I don't know if we've seen any tangible results, but I, the primary focus, I think their number one priority is the hub and spoke in the solid waste area. And I think that we're going to need all the help we can get if we're going to get anything done with regard to that with the negative budget at the state. And so I, I would support one, one more year anyways, but I would want to revisit it again next year.
Tom, it looks like you have our support. So thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Chair, is that something that we can put on consent or?
No, evidently we don't need an action on it. We just, Tom wanted to be, wanted to make sure that we were all in, or we were basically supportive so that we can move forward. Right? Thanks, Tim. All right, with that, let's move on to Administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It has been enjoyably a little quieter this last couple of weeks, given the holidays and such. So not a whole lot to report on, but I do have a few things for you. Last couple of weeks, I've finished up performance appraisals of the management team, so the department heads. So that's gone pretty well. Just one outstanding to complete at this point in time. But that'll get done here, I think, in the next week or so. So on schedule there. Also, we onboarded Commissioner-elect Winger. He spent a good portion of the day last week with the management team, about three, three and a half hours or so, and then also another hour and a half or two with me. So he should be ready to go tonight. I think he's going to be ready for all the decisions and tough questions and all of that sort of thing. He's, he's eager and I really appreciate him engaging with our team and coming up to speed so quickly. I think he's going to be a nice addition to.
Looks like he cleans up pretty well, too.
He does. We wouldn't even hardly recognize him from the last time he was in there. Anyway, so one of the things that I've been working on with the Chamber and, and other community leaders on is preparing for Bemidji Day at the Capitol. There is a plan to go back again this year to, to the State House and to talk with legislators and present our, our sort of joint platform as a community and then also have an opportunity to share our individual platform issues and concerns as well. The date has not yet been set for that. We're looking about maybe the latter part of February at this point in time. The initial date that was suggested, I had a conflict with a major AMC legislative conference. So I think the Chamber is wanting to relook at sort of when they, when they do that. So I, I don't know exactly when that'll happen, but meetings are being planned currently for that. Also, at the next work session, we'll probably spend quite a bit of time talking about county properties and projects that impact county properties. So just kind of forewarning you that we'll probably have to have a closed session on that, probably for a good, I don't know, maybe hour or so. There's quite a few. I think we've got four different properties right now that we'll want to discuss. So I'll be putting together information for that and then we'll be sharing that with you and hopefully get some direction as to how you'd like to move forward on those projects. Just as a follow-up, I was going to mention that the joint resolution for the Public Transit Board that you might call was approved by the City Council and therefore the Public Transit Board is officially resolved because it was a joint resolution and wasn't effective until both bodies actually approved it. You had approved it and the City Council had approved it. So now, just to close that loop, if you will, put a period on the sentence, so to speak, the Public Transit Board is no more. So congratulations on that. Lastly, I just will let you know that we did get all eight of the union memorandums of agreement signed and delivered before the deadline. Also, that's good news. I think everyone recognized the benefit that the board had extended to the county staff in relation to implementation of the classification and compensation study. And there were a lot of very good comments that were received by stewards and business representatives that definitely show their appreciation for what the board has done. So I'm, I'm grateful to you and, and your support on that, and I appreciate their leadership with their teams. And, and now that we're all implementing completely uniform across the entire county, which is very, very nice. Lastly, I'll just remind you that the offices will be closed on Monday, January the 20th for Civil Rights Day. Observation there. And that's all I have for you, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Tom? All right, seen any other business? Seeing none, let's look at the upcoming agenda. Is there any changes or additions or protections?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
I was just wondering if we could pull 7E, just so I can provide a, a quick update to the board, what's going on there with some funding.
So move 7E from Consent Agenda to 12A. Does that sound all right? Okay, anything else? Just so I, because some, at this age, you know, sometimes you forget stuff. I don't want to forget to recognize that we have two former Commissioners in the room. And I want, I wanted to do that at the board meeting, but I thought if I forget, I don't want to forget. We have Steve Booth and Keith Winger are here. And I, and maybe they're just here to honor Richard. I'm, I'm thinking that that might be a good idea. And if not.
Honor Scott.
So anyway, welcome to the former Commissioners. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. With that, we are adjourned until five o'clock.